City can tell you what you can do with your property and what you can't do. So we understand that, and with that in mind, I encourage you to be at ease. We're your fellow citizens, and we're here to try to help you out with what you want to do with your property. And we're generally friendly people, but we're going to need your help a little bit tonight, too. So our zoning code was recently updated a couple of years ago, and it provides for a process where if the strict enforcement of the code would cause an applicant a particular difficulty, there's a around that. And you probably read that when you when you filled out your application for the variance. In order for us to grant the variance, as I said, it's up to you. We need some help from you to show us that that strict enforcement would cause you a practical difficulty with with what you want to do. And you can you can help us out with that by tonight in your testimony showing us credible evidence that the strict enforcement of the code would cause you that that practical difficulty, not just that you have too many cars to fit in your driveway, or that you want to make something look pretty, or you want more privacy in your backyard, but something we can kind of get our teeth in. That's that credible evidence part of that. So it involves something that's not within your control, the slope of the lot that your property is on, or the shape of the lot, or that sort of thing, something unique to you. So please keep that in mind as you you testify tonight. As we proceed, I'll read the request for the record. The city's planning director or planning technician will give summary of your request in the applicable sections of the code. You will then be invited to come to the podium and and tell us what it is that you feel that practical difficulty is that you're faced with with the strict enforcement of the code. We ask that you state your name, your address, and speak into the microphone for us. And then after, pardon me, after that, anybody else who would like to offer testimony either for or against your request will be invited to do so. And then the public comment period for the the hearing will close, and members of the commission may have questions for you. And then eventually, the board will either approve your request, deny your request, approve it with conditions, or table it, and we may ask for additional information from you. Appeals of the decisions of the board may be made to the Wood County Court of Common pleas. As such, this is a quasi judicial proceeding. You will be asked to swear an oath to tell the truth. There's a court reporter present who will who will take a record of the proceedings, and we will we will just move on from there. If you haven't already, there's a sign-in sheet at the back. And at this time, if you plan to testify or think that you may testify, would you please stand and raise your right hand? I do solemnly swear that the testimony that I give in this matter this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. We have only one matter this evening, and it's from Justin Herman, 904 Country Club Drive, has requested a variance to allow an already constructed six-foot fence to remain in place, which is approximately 14 inches taller than the six-foot maximum height allowed in the northeast corner due to the gaps from the bottom of the fence to the existing grade level. Heather or Chase?
Chase is going to cover the case tonight, but I just wanted to welcome Bob McCumber here.
Sorry.
This is his first meeting. Julie Broadwell decided to resign, so Bob is representing Planning Commission on the ZBA. So thanks for doing that, Bob. We appreciate it. Now, all of you probably knew that, so it kind of happened quickly, so we wanted to just welcome Bob. Thank you.
My apologies, Bob. That was the first thing that I had written down at the top of the agenda, and I just overlooked it. So welcome.
No problem. Glad to be here. Hope I can be of some...
Roll call. Roll call.
Strike two. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Jerry Anderson.
Yep, here.
Jeff Crawford.
Here.
Tim Emmerich.
Here.
Rod Noble.
Here.
David Flager.
Here.
Bob McCumber.
Here.
Jay Sockman.
Here.
I missed a month last month, so I forgot how this all works, and I apologize. Okay, now, Chase?
All right. So this one's a little different than normal when we talk about fence height. Normally, when we talk about fence height, it's that being taller than average, it's because they went, the fence went taller. This one's different because we're talking about rate from grade height to top of the fence, but we're going to get into that. But for fences in 150.79, Section A, except when fences are required by this zoning code for screening, a fence shall not exceed heights indicated in Table 25, which is the next slide. Section B, a fence height at a given location along a fence line shall be the difference in elevation between the grade at the base of the fence and the top of the fence at that location. The grade at the base of the fence shall be the elevation of the ground surface before mounding or building up of the ground surface, if any occurred. If a fence occurs along a terraced portion of earth, such as a retaining wall, its height is measured from the higher ground elevation. So for side and rear yard, which is applicable to this particular case, it is a six-foot tall maximum. And we just want to mention for this one, this this fence did receive a zoning permit and also a pool, so they received a permit for both. But we want, we wanted to mention, mention Section 150.44G specifically about swimming pools. In-ground swimming pools and recreational ponds shall be enclosed with a solid fence at least four feet in height with a self-closing gate. That was done. And a solid fence, though, with its definition, is a fence which has a gap no greater than four inches in dimension. The reason, reason why we bring that up is because the gap underneath the fence is, we believe, large enough for someone or like a child to fit underneath it. That's why we wanted to make sure we emphasize this. I'm going to read the property history letter to you all. So this letter is to provide additional background information on the variance request for an already constructed six-foot fence to remain in place, which is approximately 14 inches taller than the six-foot maximum height allowed in the northeast corner due to the gaps from the bottom of the fence to the existing grade level. The property was approved for two permits to install a new pool and fence on March 27, 2025. Those are Exhibits A packets. It is the, a requirement that an in-ground pool be surrounded by a solid fence with self-latching gates below as an aerial view of the property. In late August, it was observed that the in-ground pool had been installed, but no fence had been erected around the pool. On September 2, a letter was sent to the property owner advising that it had been observed that the pool had been installed, but there was no fence, either permanent or temporary, to act as a safety barrier. That is, that letter is Exhibit C. In mid-September, it was observed that a fence had been erected, but the northeast corner was noticeably above grade. On September 16, a letter was sent to the property owner advising them of the gap below the fence on the northeast side. The letter further notified the property owner that the gap cannot be filled in and that the fence will either have to be lowered to follow the contour of the land, or a variance will have to be requested. That letter is Exhibit D. On October 23, an application was filed requesting a variance from the zoning board of, for the zoning board of appeals. Lastly, I wanted the board to be aware that 904 Country Club, Country Club Drive has no history of receiving any variance. I will now read you the letters that we received. We received two letters. One is in the packet. One was received as not a packet. These letters are from, this first letter is from Amanda LaMaster and Kelly Glasgow at 944, 945 Country Club Drive in Bowling Green. Dear Council of the zoning board, I am writing as a homeowner who resides across the street from 904 Country Club Drive and has a clear view of the property and fence. I want to express my support for allowing the existence, existing fence to remain at its current height. While I understand that the fence exceeds the original permitted height, I believe the finished structure is visually pleasing and contributes positively to the character of the neighborhood. From my perspective across the street, the fence appears well-constructed and proportionate, adding to the overall aesthetic appeal of the property rather than detracting from it. If the fence were to be shortened to meet the original height requirement, it would likely result in uneven or unfinished appearance. This would not only diminish the attractiveness of the fence, but it's itself, but could also detract from the visual harmony of the surrounding homes. Additionally, asking the homeowners to dismantle and rebuild a well-crafted fence would be unnecessary and disruptive to the neighborhood's appearance and continuity. In my view, the current fence height enhances rather than harms the visual landscape of our street. I respectfully urge the board to consider allowing the fence to remain as it stands. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Amanda LaMaster and Kelly Glasgow. The second fence, second fence, second letter, which is not in the packet that we received, is printed out and was given to you all, is from Valerie Schuler at 910 Country Club Drive. Dear Ms. Saylor, my name is Valerie Schuler, and I live in the property to the north, north of and adjacent to the Herman property. I am writing to voice my opinion on the variance for the Herman fence height. It amazes me that there is even any question on this matter to have installed the fence following the topography of the land in order to maintain the six-foot height of the fence would have resulted in an eyesore of a fence. Perhaps on a larger scale with a different type of fence, the beandering height of a fence following the land might be pleasing to the eye. However, the way the Hermans installed the fence, although over the six-foot prescribed limit, provides a visually attractive fence line. Had your letter not informed me, I would not have even noticed the fence was over six feet tall. I just see a very, very nice-looking white vinyl fence. I know Justin and his friends and family installed the major portion of the fence, and they worked diligently to be sure that it was level across the top, providing a uniform fence line. I am wholeheartedly in favor of granting the variance, as the fence is very attractive as is. I would hate to see, first of all, the amount of work it would take to bring the fence into compliance of the six-foot limit, and secondly, the visually unappealing fence that would result. Should you have any questions or wish to speak with me, my phone number is 419-575-0799. Thank you for consideration of my opinion. Sincerely, Valerie Schuler. Those were the two letters that we received. I would also, though, like to read the email provided by our city engineer, Brad Holman, in this matter. It looks like the zoning code clearly states that the height is measured from the existing ground surface elevation before any mounding or buildup would occur. I would discourage any mounding, as even slight grade changes will likely cause drainage issues for the homeowner or the adjacent properties. There is a catch basin located just outside this fence, fencing area that is, that likely serves as this homeowner's, serves this homeowner's property. Installing a mound, a mound underneath the fence would create a barrier preventing stormwater from getting away, leading to standing water. Maintaining the original ground surface helps to preserve the intended drainage path. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Brad Holman. And that was our city engineer. Here, we're going to get to some imagery. So this is an aerial view of the property. More aerial images of the property. This is the front of the home, side. This is the rear of the home. Now, these pictures are, were taken before the pool was installed. This is the front of the home. And here you can see images of the fence in question, the northeast corner particularly, where you can see the large gap underneath the fence. And there is an image with a tape measure from the bottom of the fence to the, to the ground, which would be, which is considered grade. And this is just an image from the approved permit for the pool and the fence. And an advertisement was placed in the newspaper of general circulation as required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the administrative code were posted in proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and joint property owners. Therefore, all procedural requirements for this hearing have been met.
Thank you, Chase. Who from the applicant would like to speak first? If you come up to the podium, and again, please speak into the microphone and state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Justin Herman. I am the owner of 904 Country Club Drive. I'm here to, I guess, explain why the fence is the way it is. I, as it says in the description, made sure that it was level all the way across, because I thought it would be unappeasing to the eye to the neighborhood to see a fence follow the grade of the ground with the waves. As they stated also in the article, that there is a drainage, which is why the fence is so high in that area. And I guess if it's, if it is approved, I'm not done, I guess, with that, so it will, like, the gaps under the fence would be fixed.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Herman?
How are you going to fix the gap? Fresh me.
Um, I was going to bring in fill dirt that they said I couldn't do yet until, or because of the variance.
If he had brought in fill dirt to begin with, then put this up and put that exact fence up, we wouldn't be here tonight, would we?
No.
No, but he'd also have had trouble with the drainage, because the city engineer states that.
City engineer states that.
There's a basin right there.
There's also plans to, when they bring in fill dirt, to run a drain along the back end of the pool over to there, so standing water. And artificial grass would be going back there, so all that drain was going to be pitched towards that drainage with an additional drain.
Now, Chase or Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the code says that that height is established from the grade prior to any fill being spelled. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So Jerry, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
So Jerry's question, the answer to Jerry's question is yes, correct? He'd have been okay.
No.
No?
No, because he'd have done it before. The measurement was original, not after. Is that, do you understand? The height of the fence is determined from the grade prior to any fill or grading being done.
Prior to anything happening, pool-wise.
Right. I don't know about that. Like, it specifically addresses fences, but... Any other questions?
I am struck by the safety issue of, because when I visited that, I wasn't, I was looking mostly at that distance there, but when you think about the pool inside, a child could definitely get under that fence, couldn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to do some type of barreering? Not dirt, but an interior line of a small fence that would prevent somebody crawling through, or even a type of a shrub that's not easily penetrated by a small kid trying to get through there?
Yes.
I mean, something like that would, because to me, the safety aspect is what was striking, like you just said. And if you mitigate that problem, I can't see a problem, because the fence looks great. I mean, it really, really does.
Are you saying to, instead of, like, don't put dirt down? Because my, I guess, what I was...
You could fix the problem like that.
The plan was to bring dirt to the code, which was four inches below the bottom of the fence. Obviously, can't do that right now. So if it was approved, yes, I would put something in there temporarily, but to also let you guys know that the, the pool is completely anchored in the concrete cover that people can walk on right now. So that aspect of the safety is covered. I also have three kids, so their safety is important as well. But yeah, if, if you don't want dirt, or if I could add dirt later...
Yeah, I'm not saying either way. I think to mitigate the safety aspect from at least two members of the board mentioning it is to figure out a way to prevent that. Using an interior fencing of some kind that would look nice?
Yeah.
Or some type of a shrubbery that's hard to penetrate through there? I mean, I don't have the answer what it is.
I could use, I could put another fence, like a interior fence.
I mean, our code, you can't really put a shrub up. According to our code, it's got to be a fence for, for a pool, correct?
That's correct. It has to be a solid fence, and a solid fence, by definition, has four inches in space between the gaps.
Thank you. Okay, well, yeah, thank you.
But isn't, is my understanding, though, you're going to mitigate this problem in the future with dirt and a drain?
Yes. I was going to, before I, I guess, knew the rule, I was going to...
Right.
Bring in dirt this past summer, and then I was informed that I had violated a rule. So now I'm here.
I'm sorry. What, what did the engineers again say about? I just want to clarify that again.
So the email I received from Brad Holman, who's the city engineer, he said, "It looks like the zoning code clearly states that the height is measured from the existing ground surface elevation before any mounding or buildup would occur. I would discourage any mounding, as even a slight grade changes will likely cause drainage issues for the homeowner or adjacent properties. There is a catch basin located just outside this fenced area and likely serves this homeowner's property. Installing a mound underneath the fence will create a barrier preventing stormwater from getting away, leading to standing water. Maintaining the original ground surface helps to preserve the intended drainage path. Please let me know if you have any questions." And the drainage, the catch basin, if you look at the picture, is, I'm not sure if my cursor can get to it. Nope. But it is the third post in going, that'd be to the west, and it's about two to three feet off the post.
You can't take it down or anything.
So it's right there.
And filled with dirt.
Can I play devil's advocate for a second? You did level across the top, and I appreciate that. You clearly, these are, those are separate panels. Each one is a panel that goes between the uprights. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, they slide right in there. I swear I have seen these before, where you have a level look to it, and you can't take it down at an angle, because I see the pattern within the panel is, is, is a perpendicular. If you took three, four panels and lowered them all in level together to make them legal, is that a terrible thing?
Repeat that.
If you took the panels that are illegal, because the ones up out of the house are not the problem.
Correct.
If you took those last panels and lowered them all by the exact same amount, so that is still level, would that be a huge issue? I'm just looking here.
He, he's pretty much saying, like, the last four panels, drop them down six inches, or whatever.
And you're going the other way.
Yes. They, they also raised the yard up substantially when they put the pool in. So it's on the interior of the fence as well, you can, you have like a whole head of space that you can see right over the fence, like, if you're, if my kids are a little bit older, they could probably climb right out of the six-foot fence.
Okay. Do I understand that you installed the fence yourself? You did not use a contractor?
Correct.
So I guess I just need some clarification, because to me, the safety risk is real, and there's, seems like practical solutions to negate that. But can you run me again through what, what's the plan to mitigate the safety risk?
Bring in dirt.
But isn't that...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Say not to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I understand you to say, sir, that you were going to, your intention was to put a drain on the inside of the fence that would lead toward the catch basin?
Correct, yes.
And then you put, then you know, you put dirt in the gap, so you've closed the gap and you maintained the drainage?
Correct.
It was your intention.
Correct. And I, I understand what the engineer's saying, but that, that basin is also filled to the top with dirt. So it's, there's going to be dirt there as well inside, and it, I mean, it's not like whether we go around the city cleaning out the basins everywhere.
See, I myself would feel better if the city engineer would be okay with him doing that. But otherwise, I would be okay with you putting a fence underneath there. That would be the most ideal thing, myself, is putting like a six-inch barrier fence.
Because then it would alleviate the problem of you having to put a drain in there. If you were willing to do and amend it to stating that she would be willing to put a barrier fence on the inside, I'd be very amenable, because then the safety aspect has been taken care of.
That's it. Yeah, I could do that.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, you can have your seat back. We'll close the public comment part of the hearing. First, anyone else from the gallery have any? Sir, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Scott Schuler. I live directly north of the Herman's property at 910 Country Club Drive. That is my backyard and my garden that you see in the picture there. That catch basin is also in my yard, which I do maintain in the spring. Justin is right, it's full of debris and stuff at this time, but in the spring, I pop that grate out, and it's only about three feet deep, and suck the leaves and all that stuff out, so that catch basin would be usable if he decides to put in some type of additional drainage. As stated in the, the one letter that you read was from my wife, we are wholeheartedly in favor of allowing them to keep the, the fence the way it is, granting them the, whatever they need, the easement, not an easement, I'm sorry, but we really like the look of the fence after they put it up, so we would really prefer that it stays the way it is now. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll close the public comment. Any conversation amongst us here? Like, like I said, if he were to agree to a fencing on the inside, just in those areas, that would prevent somebody from crawling under it, I'd be okay with this, leaving it like it is. Jay?
I, yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I stated. If, if there's a, some sort of interior fence barrier that way, then he, I mean, he still might want a grade. I mean, that's up to him, but I'd feel better, safety aspect, if a small kid would crawl under, as long as he amends it tonight.
Jerry?
I think I've had my say.
Tim?
Yeah, unless the safety aspect's addressed, I would not support it.
It's a quandary for me, too. I, the fence looks nice. I have the identical fence. As a matter of fact, I have a, a bigger grade change than you do, and we did follow the contour of the land, and it, it looks fine to me. However, I do have a concern about the safety, as the others have, have stated, and I think that's the reason why the code says that pools will be fenced in, and there won't be more than a four-inch gap at the bottom of the fence, is for that very reason. And that, that one, I have a, I do have an issue with. The overall height, I don't care about 14 inches that much. There's nothing in the, the seven criteria that I look at that you, you should have seen when you, you applied. One through five, I don't have any problem with. It's a fine-looking fence. Whether it can be obviated through some other method, that's number six. Certainly, it can be lowered to where there's no more than a four-inch gap. It's not for us to say, I don't believe that you can't bring in fill or run some storm drain to a catch basin that allegedly isn't even functioning. I, you know, I don't know how we can get involved in that. Number seven, whether or not the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement is, is observed, that one I have a little bit of a problem with, too. And again, it all goes back to safe, safety. It's not how it looks. There have been some suggestions, some discussion about other fences, different materials, and so on and so forth. I think if you recall the workshop that we had with the city attorney, that's not up to us to make those recommendations. It's up to the applicant to come back to us with an alternate plan. So that's just for general comments. Jeff?
I, I, I agree with you. I, I like the look of the fence. If I'm understanding this right, he's, he can mitigate this how he wants to with dirt, whether the engineer likes it or not, and that's not really up to us. And I, I can't find it right now. I thought I read in here, he has to fix the gap. That's outside of our, even if we approve it as is with no changes, doesn't he have to fix that gap for a safety reason? Isn't that in here regarding fences?
Yes, the gap would have to be fixed, because at this point, the fence is not in compliance.
So that, whether we say yes to this as is, he has to fix that gap?
Yes.
Okay. So given that, I don't, I'm perfectly good with this request as presented, knowing that that problem is going to be solved, that safety issue is going to be solved one way or the other. And I, I lived at 945 Country Club. These are the, be the only two properties that would be affected. The two letters that we have, and the gentleman testified, that would have a problem with it visually if it were, if it came down to something like that. So I, I intend to support the request.
Back up a second. He would have to fill that gap based on what?
I'm not...
This is an ordinance about six feet tall. Where in it does it say that gap has to be closed?
It's because when it comes to the, a pool has to be surrounded by a solid fence, and a solid fence cannot have a gap of more than four inches. And the gap that's underneath, underneath the fence as is, from the bottom of that fence to grade in certain areas, is 14 inches down to 11 inches.
But if we approve this, it's, it's almost saying, oh, he doesn't really have to fix
Well, I put it to you another way. If the fence were six feet high in compliance with height, but there was an eight-inch gap at the bottom, would he be here? I mean, I'm hearing that he's got to fix the fence no matter what the height of the fence, or if... fence, or fix the gap no matter what the height of the fence. I thought we were, we were looking at granting a variance, not only on the height, but on the, on the, the gap at the bottom.
I thought it was overall height.
I thought it was height, too. I don't think I would have came-
If you're, if you need to, you need to come up to the microphone if you want to speak, please.
So we wrote it based on height, the gap. We put him on clear notice with those letters that were in your packet that that is in violation. And we were giving him time to deal with the height issue. But we did our part by putting him on notice with the code, and he was aware of that gap being a violation. So he's trying to correct, you know, kind of a Plan A and then a Plan B, but he's aware that that gap needs fixed.
So we aren't concerned with the gap at the bottom of the fence? We're only concerned with the height of the fence?
Correct.
Okay, big difference.
Yeah, it is a big difference.
I support one, but not the other.
So I'm, I'm all confused now.
But the gap is going to be fixed.
Correct.
City is going to require that no matter what.
Yes.
We aren't concerned with the gap.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, we're concerned with it, but we, like I said-
But we're not concerned with it.
Justin, we're good on that. Okay, thank you.
So no matter what we do, the city's going to take, get, make sure the gap gets taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, in that case, 14 inches doesn't seem- It's a nice-looking fence.
Okay. It's a neighborhood.
Not a thing. We're good.
This is kind of a tough one to start out at, you're-
Welcome to work.
I want to, did want to ask a question about the, there was talk about the, Mr. Herman putting, I guess, a low fence on the interior to cover up the, the gap, the 14-inch gap? Is that what we were discussing at one point?
We were, but-
No inside fence would, I asked Chase and Heather, would, would that, would that be in compliance with the law, or would it still be in violation of the law with that solution?
If you would grant the variance for the height, then the fence would be able to remain as is, because it's above grade. So if you would put another fence, smaller one on the inside, then that would solve the gap issue.
Well, as long as it's-
As long as it-
A solid fence.
Yes.
Which we don't care about.
Right.
No.
Okay, so the, for, the gap is going to be fixed one way or another. Our decision is to whether to grant a variance that allows the, the fence to be more than six feet tall from the ground measured at the top of the fence.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Get your question answered? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Wouldn't care to make a motion for the disposition of this case?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sockman, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any further discussion? If not, Mr. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jerry Anderson.
Yes.
Bob McCumber.
Yes.
Jeff Crawford.
Yes.
Tim Emmer.
Yes.
Rod Noble.
Yes.
David Flager.
Yes.
Jay Sockman.
Yes.
Okay, your variance request has been approved, and he's got the permit, right? So he doesn't need to come see you guys. So you're good to go. All right. Any lobby visitations this evening? Anything else from the board? I'd like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January, maybe. Your motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.